Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call the May thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-five Planning Commission regular meeting to order. The Planning Commission is holding hybrid meetings. Members of the public can attend the meeting in person or observe the meeting on Zoom, online by visiting www.cityofarcada.org and following the live meetings link at the bottom of the city's homepage or on the city's YouTube channel. If you are attending remotely, please be aware that the Zoom feed provides the closest to real-time stream. If you rely on the other feeds and you wish to make comments, please be aware of the time lag on those feeds. The first item on our agenda is the land acknowledgement. The city of Arcata acknowledges that the lands we are located on are the unceded ancestral lands of the Wiat tribe. The land that Arcata rests on is known in the Wiat language as gudene, meaning "over in the woods" or "among the redwoods." Past actions by local, state, and federal governments removed the Wiat and other indigenous peoples from the land and threatened to destroy their cultural practices. The city of Arcata acknowledges the Wiat community, their elders both past and present, as well as future generations. This acknowledgement seeks to aid in dismantling the legacy narratives of settler colonialism. Staff, will you please call roll?
Yeah, Commissioner Lehman?
Here.
Commissioner Strickland?
Here.
Vice Chair Simmons?
Here.
And Chair Davies?
Here, and noting for the record that Commissioners Tangney, Hamm, and
Hickey?
Hickey are all absent so far. We're joined this evening, as always, by Community Development Director David Loyah. Next, we have oral communications. During this time, people may make comments about items that are not on the agenda. If you wish to speak on one of our agenda items, you will have an opportunity when we are discussing those items. If you have comments about items that are not listed on our agenda today, please line up now behind the lectern. If you are on Zoom and you wish to make comments on matters that are not on today's agenda, please raise your hand by selecting the raise hand icon on the right side of your screen or by pressing star nine on your phone. The clerk will unmute you when it is your turn to speak. With that, I'd like to open public comment. Each speaker will have three minutes to comment during early oral communications. Feel free to state your name for the record. May we have the first speaker, please?
I have some papers, too. I don't know if I should hand them out now or not.
Yeah, David can grab them from you. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. My name is Ozia Burnell, and I work at Sunny Bray Middle School, and I want to start by thanking you for letting me speak here tonight. I'm here to propose a project to restore and secure the Grotsman Creek detention basin. This area has unfortunately become a hotspot for underage drinking, drug use, and theft. The tree coverage provides concealment, and the result is a serious accumulation of trash, safety hazards, and damage to the environment. Right now, the site is littered with broken bottles, drug paraphernalia, and stolen goods, mostly drinks from a nearby grocery store. This behavior has not only harmed the local ecosystem, but has also made the area unsafe for families and other community members. This space has essentially been claimed by those using it for illegal activities, rather than the public it was meant to serve. It is classified as a natural resource and is currently being polluted by these illegal activities. I'm proposing a community-led restoration of the creek that includes a full cleanup of trash and hazardous materials, trimming back dense vegetation to increase visibility, installing signage and potentially solar lighting to discourage loitering and illegal activity, and creating features that encourage positive use, like a walking path or a native plant garden. My goal is not to just fix the problem, but to transform the area into a safe, natural, and family-friendly space again. I'm asking the committee for your support in three ways: approval to begin this project, with the city cooperation, access to city resources like trash removal or help with materials, and help coordinating with other departments, especially Public Works and law enforcement, to make the improvement sustainable long term. I also plan to involve local volunteers, school groups, and possibly launch and adopt a creek or Friends of the Creek group to maintain it after restoration. This is a realistic, community-driven solution that addresses public safety, environmental restoration, and local pride all at once. Thank you for your time, your service, and considering this proposal. I will also show this site is right next to the school I work at. I went out yesterday to take most recent photos, and this was found in there. We have a lot of middle schoolers aged about eleven to fourteen going to that area, so we decided to remove this since it could be used in some dangerous ways, but just to give you a visual besides the pictures of what's out there. Yeah, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you so much for your comments. David, can we pass this to Emily's department? And is there an appropriate channel there to share this information?
Yeah, certainly. You can reach out to me after the meeting, and we'll connect you with the right person to speak with.
Would that be Parks and Recreation?
Yeah, Environmental Services, yeah.
Gotcha. Okay. Thank you. I appreciate it.
Thank you so much for coming.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, evening. My name's Joanne McGary. I want to talk about three things in the three minutes. I'll start with buses, then bicycles, and finally, the plaza. Buses. I participate at the Humble Transit Authority board meetings on a regular basis because public transit is very important to me, and I guess I preface all this with, again, reminding us of the Climate Action Plan that will hopefully come into play soon. And as we think about everything that we're planning in our city and connecting what our city's doing with other places in the county is really important. But buses, I've been talking to them about extending Arcata and regional transit to the South G Street area where the city is doing SAM-SIP studies on important changes to be made. But having lived in that area for a year now, it would be really great to safely be able to get on a bus without having to cross Samoa Boulevard to get to the last bus stop. So that's some of the things that I'm talking about. But in future planning, the Transit Center was closed down at the end of April. There's no staff there. It's thirty years old, the Transit Center, but it is now no longer a transit center, and it's very disappointing because we really need to promote public transit, and there's not even a way for people to get paper schedules. And, you know, the visuals are not adequate, in my opinion. So the Transit Center, for planning gateway plans, I know that when we spread something supposedly over the freeway, they're talking about a transit hub. But before that, we really need to plan what we're going to put in different parts of our community to attract people to doing the better thing and collectively traveling by bus or elsewise. Bikes, okay, I've got to speed it up. But bicycles, I would really like to know if the new apartment complex up in Valley West, that beautiful thing at the bottom of the horseshoe, has sufficient bike storage, safe bike storage on its thing? Because that was something that was discussed and it was asked for. I know they don't have solar carports. You know, we really have to think for the future in designing, and if there's any follow-up to what we asked for and what is actually happening. So I'd really like to know for the future, because I have to park my bike inside now because there's no safe place for me to park it, and the future can't be that way. Twenty minutes, nineteen. The historic landmark, Jeanette Cooper, made a talk at the last city council meeting about they're working on historic designation for the plaza, and I just truly hope that the Wiat's have been involved in any of this discussion. We do a land acknowledgement, and if we're doing something without the Wiat input, that's scary.
Thank you for your comments. David, is there anyone online waiting to join our discussion? Okay. Thank you for your comments. As always, we appreciate participation and input. We're going to now move on to our consent calendar this evening, and we have one item on consent this evening, which is to approve the Planning Commission minutes from our regular meeting, April twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-five. Would any commissioner like to pull the item, or do we have a motion?
I move to approve.
We have a motion?
A second.
And a second, and I want to make sure this is a new part of our process here, which is just to give the opportunity for public to make comments on the consent calendar specifically. Anybody like to comment on consent aisle this evening? Anyone online, David? Okay. We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, motion passes, so thank you for that. We have no public hearings this evening, so we'll move on to business items. And the only item this evening under business items is the next chapter in our work to consider the city's local coastal element and provide direction as necessary. And can we begin with a staff report, please?
Yeah, thank you, Chair. We are honing in on some actual public hearings on the local coastal program. At this point, we're still trying to refine the last edits. We've gone through a process where, over the last several meetings, Planning Commissioners have provided input. The plan was for you to submit your comments to staff in advance the Wednesday before the meeting, and then we can get those comments into the packets. We've gone through some legwork to work on some of the policies and standards, and those were included in your packet as attachment A. I've got the language up here, and I believe that we've addressed in these last changes that I've included here and track changes all of the discussion that the Planning Commission has had to date. These changes have been incorporated into the versions that are on the website right now. So if you look on the website, you'll see a clean version. These are the track changes versions, so you can see the changes that staff made. If you want to make any additional changes to this language, I'm more than happy to address that and update it on the web. And then in addition, we had some public comment that resulted in some of these changes as well. And in that discussion I had with Colin Fisk, he had recommended some additional changes that, before printing and publishing the packet, I didn't quite understand or, you know, couldn't make the changes at that time. And so I submitted to you tonight the copy of the email that he sent in our concluding email where I grasped what he was talking about, and I did make a couple of additional changes which I will present to you here. They're not verbatim what was recommended in that exchange, but but I think it does largely address the concerns that were raised. With regard to parking, Colin had mentioned that it didn't make sense to refer to providing the minimum extent necessary to adequately serve development and then allow for reduction, further reduction, or waiver of those parking requirements if you add transit-oriented development, because we actually have no minimum standard now. So we have a maximum, no minimum. Doesn't make sense to reduce a minimum or no minimum. So that was a good point, and I revised it to read, "Off-street parking for new development shall adhere to parking maximums. Parking shall be designed not adversely impact public access to the coast," and just leave it at that. So the, obviously, the parking can also adhere to the minimums, but they can't go above the maximums. So I could actually conceive, now that I'm reading that out loud for the first time, of enhancing this just a bit to make it clear that "shall not exceed the parking maximums." But I think that addresses the comment. And then with regard to universal access, I think the way it was worded previously drew attention to the fact that not everyone's physical disability means that they can see, and so providing visual access for someone who can't see doesn't really address what we were trying to address there. And so I rewrote it to read that "if access to physically disabled persons cannot be feasibly provided on the project site," this is under a body of standards that require access to new coastal trails through private sites with easements provided. "So if you can't do that on the project site, an alternative to access shall be provided, including vista points, resting areas, or other alternatives to trail access." This leaves it open. It addresses all forms of physical disabilities that might preclude a person from being able to enjoy the coast and provides us alternatives that, you know, might include braille signage, for example. So I think these two changes don't dramatically alter the language that we had in there, but address the comments that were raised. What I'd like out of the commission tonight is agreement that we've that with these changes, we've gotten to a point with the LCP that you're comfortable moving forward to actual hearings, noticed public hearings. If that's the case, if that's where we're at, then the process going forward would look like a public hearing in July, your first July meeting, a presumably recommendation at that July meeting to the city council for adoption of the coastal element and the coastal zoning ordinance. Those two pieces being, you know, the two parts of our local coastal program. And the city council then would take it up at their very next meeting and presumably introduce the ordinance and adopt the resolution for the local coastal element, and then that ordinance would have to have a second reading at their very next meeting in August, and that would that would be a huge milestone in this process. From that point going forward, we would be looking at submittal to the Coastal Commission. They go through their review process, and if the documents are certified, they would send those back, and then we would accept that certification ultimately. So we're still looking at, you know, a process that's going to work its way through, you know, multiple internal reviews, ultimately, a Coastal Commission review, and then a final action by the city council to accept that coastal certification, lasting through early two thousand and twenty-six, most likely. We do have one other internal review that I didn't mention yet, and that's the Creeks and Wetlands Committee will be considering a recommendation to the Planning Commission at its meeting next Thursday. And so when we come back and we're holding hearings on this, I'll bring to you whatever their recommendation was as well. If we're not in that idyllic dream state where the Planning Commission can say, "Yes, we're ready with these changes to move forward. Go ahead and notice that public hearing, and you actually have additional changes that you want to make recommendations to me for," now would be a great time to do that. I'd recommend that the Planning Commission ask any clarifying questions, open the public comment period, and through your deliberations, give direction.
Sounds good. Before we open public comment, are there any clarifying questions from Commissioners for staff? Okay, not seeing any. I'm going to open public comment. If you're in person, please feel free to line up at the lectern. If you're on Zoom, please raise your hand by selecting the raise hand icon on the right side of your screen or by pressing star nine on your phone. The clerk will unmute you when it is your turn to speak. No takers here in the gallery. Is there anyone waiting? Okay, great. Thank you for that, David. Bringing this back to the commission here for discussion, I suppose maybe one way go ahead. Looks like you got something to say, Peter? Fire away.
David, could you show the energy, it's the lighting standards that you sent to us? Could you show the energy efficiency section? There you go. So my comment is, these lighting technologies that are mentioned here are all old-fashioned. And nowadays, almost anyone trying to be energy efficient with outdoor lighting would use LED lighting. So I think either we specify LED lighting or just say, "Use the most energy-efficient lighting technology possible," which would be LED lighting. And there are, I checked, there are LED lights that that hold to the International Dark Sky standards, and there's another place where it says, "The lighting shall be warm." Maybe we want to say here that the lighting shall be three thousand K or less so that it's warm light. I'm not sure how specific we want to be with these, you know, with the statements in this element, but, yeah, it's clear that LED lights would be the ones used.
I mean, it makes sense, at least, to have language that doesn't call out specific technologies, perhaps?
Yeah, I I think adding LED would be a good idea, clearly a good idea. That was an oversight. If there's anything on this list that you want to remove, we should remove it. I think providing alternatives is an okay thing to do. I think writing this so that you have to provide the most energy-efficient lighting possible, if we wrote it like that, that might lead to new technologies that are cost prohibitive being available, and the city saying, "Well, I'm sorry you have to use that new technology regardless." It's kind of a ridiculous and low-probability outcome, but I think, you know, we have something that we can implement. I think, you know, the way it's written, "Outdoor lighting shall use energy-efficient fixtures and lamps" is also fine. and lamps," is also fine, to just leave it at that and take out all examples.
Is there a preference on the commission as far as adding LED or just keeping it more general?
I'll also note that the building code has energy efficiency requirements that, you know, go above and beyond...
Super C Ds.
In terms of detail, yeah, that we have here. So I guess my recommendation in light of that would, no pun intended, would be to strike everything in the parenthetical.
I'm fine with that.
Go ahead, Matt.
Now it's going to be my suggestion.
Peter, are you okay with that? Strike specific examples and...
Yeah, I guess so, yeah.
Okay, great. Thanks for making that change, David. Thanks for bringing that up. Peter, is there...
Peter had the other suggestion about specifying the warmness of the lighting. And I don't know if we want to make that change as well, but...
It says, "The lighting shall be warm somewhere." Yeah, no, we could write that down. Yeah. Exterior lighting, it's on the shelf.
Oh, yeah, right.
Oh, shall be warm lighting. Yeah.
Typically, warm lighting is 3,000 degrees K or less. I don't, I think saying warm lighting is good enough.
Everybody comfortable with that? Okay. Is there anything else from anyone else regarding the LCP review language?
I would just say that I was supportive of the changes to the language that David shared up on the screen that's not in this packet, correct? Okay.
Yeah, thanks for bringing that up, Abby. Does anyone have a problem with the language and that change that Colin suggested? Okay, we're all unified there. So are we at a point where we're comfortable with this moving forward to hearings and then further discussion when it comes to that? Okay. So we're in alignment with where we're at right now, David? This concludes our business item this evening. We'll move on to... Correspondence and communications. Do we have any correspondence from Planning Commission's members this evening? What about staff?
I have just a couple of quick announcements. And what I was going to say was thank you. It's been a lot of hard work, and that was kind of an anticlimactic conclusion, but you'll have your opportunity for, you know, the big hurrah in July. Okay, so in terms of other correspondence, I just wanted to remind the Planning Commission and the public that the joint study session between the city council and the Planning Commission will happen in June. Right now, we're targeting June 30th as the date. We're still confirming that date, but I think that's the date we settled on. One of the topics that you'll talk about is the local coastal program. It'll be an opportunity to, you know, for the council to provide any insights in terms of policy direction and for the commission to share, you know, your thoughts as you've developed them over the last couple of years or months, as the case may be, prior to having those hearings. And so if there's any last tweaks that come out of that conversation, I think it'll be really important. It'll also be an opportunity for everyone to be real clearly on the same page in terms of what the process looks like going forward. I also wanted to mention that, again, I announced last meeting that we were awarded the Daniel Burnham Award for a Comprehensive Plan, and I gave you a teaser the time before. I'm just shouting it out again, that we'll be going this Thursday. We're sending a contingent, which includes your chair and the mayor, to Berkeley for the Northern Section California Association of Planning, American Planning Association, rather, to receive that Daniel Burnham Award. I have been notified that the trophy may be late, and so we'll be very disappointed to not be able to bring that trophy home with us, but we'll receive it at some point.
There will be photos.
Yeah. And then lastly, I just wanted to mention that the Historic Landmark Committee will be out on the plaza during Farmer's Market this weekend in celebration of Historic Preservation Month. They'll be hosting several different kinds of events and learning opportunities to learn about Arcata's, in particular, the plaza's history. It'll be a good opportunity. There'll be a walking tour starting at two, so make your way down to the plaza this weekend. And then to round out the celebrations for Historic Preservation Month, the Historic Site Society at the Phillips House will be hosting events the following day, Sunday the eighteenth. And so look out for those events celebrating Arcata's history. That's all I have.
Love that. Thank you. Well, there being no further business, this meeting is adjourned.